I don't recall. Commissioner Eno is there?
I will accept.
Is there a motion on the table? Someone would like to? I'll wrap.
I'm going to accept eight thirteen minutes as amended with the proper lift of commissioners.
My second vote. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. The next would be to accept, modify, or correct the minutes for June 10th.
Who moved to adopt this presented?
Commissioner McHugh, um, motions to accept it or adopt it. Is there a second? Well, actually, since you were not present, technically you should have stated from the center. All second.
You weren't there yet. So technically you don't know.
We're not. No, that was last month. That was not there. Oh, well, there's one headed there.
That's not present there.
Commission, oh, that's that means commission, okay.
I'm going to. I will drop my motion. Maybe we should just table this till next meeting.
Okay. So did that call for a vote to table this?
You're the last.
Okay, let's table that. All right, moving on to item number two. To appeal the planning director's decision, an appeal to the planning director's decision to deny the extension of the urgency ordinance for commercial cannabis license number 504 at 100 Wingert Road in Hayfork.
Okay, we're still working through this item. We're hoping to find resolution. We're asking for another month to take care of this matter and hopefully can be pulled from the agenda entirely. So at this time, staff recommends that the commission over the public hearing can take any public comment because it was noticed, close the public hearing, and continue the item to August 12th, 2021.
Is there any technical questions from staff? Okay, we'll open this item to public comment. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on Zoom? All right. We'll close the public comment, bring it back to staff.
I'd like to continue to August 12th.
Okay. Do we have a second? All second. All those in favor of continuing this item to August 12th? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number three. An appeal for the planning commissioner's director's decision to deny an extension under the urgency ordinance 1355 for commercial cannabis cultivation license number 40 at 220 Joyville Lane in Hayfork.
Okay, this is another one. When I did draft the memo last Friday, there was an option to actually move forward with this item. Since that time, the applicant and their representative had requested a continuance, a meeting with them on Monday to hopefully also resolve this issue. So is this another?
Questions or comments?
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant on Zoom?
I don't see him. No, I don't see him.
Connor.
I had a question. In regards, does, do applicants have to get a state license prior to applying for a license?
No.
Do they have to have a state license to get issued a county license?
No, they have to have a state and county license to cultivate. And our ordinance raised that 90 days from the issuance of a county license, a state license has to be obtained. So if you don't have the state and county license, you can't cultivate. If you have the county license, you need to get the state license within 90 days, then you can cultivate. But that's how the ordinance is written.
How does the state foresee that? Or do they have any bone in this? Do they care if cultivators are licensed with the state prior to cultivating?
Absolutely.
So what is their take on it? So I get a state license. How long do I have to get a county license? Or is there any date put on that?
Actually, I refer to Anna Wright. She deals with this much more than I do, who just deal with the county licenses. She knows the timelines better than I do. If I may defer to her to answer the question.
Commissioner Sharp, can we keep this on to this particular comment?
Well, it is to do with this item because he doesn't have a state license currently. He says, yeah, we can continue. It was, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I will have that answer ready for you at the next meeting if this item is forwarded.
Thank you. If there's any more input from the commission, we'll open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
No.
Anna Wright?
Can I comment and answer that question? Sure, sure. It's my public comment. I'll save some time. So in order to apply for a state license, you have to have a county license. The state and the county's timelines aren't very similar. We used to be able to do it all at the same time, but in order to, you have to pay an application fee even to submit a state. And then once the state approves it, you pay a license fee, and that's your annual fee each year. And the state can stop the processing at a couple of different points if they feel like items are missing, including a valid county license, SEQA review, vision wildlife, et cetera. So ideally, you wait until you have that county license in hand before you click submit. Now, whether the state gets it processed in 90 days, that's kind of up in the air. But as long as you have a county license and you're in process with the state, the county's not going to rivel the license if the state doesn't get issued within 90 days. You just can't cultivate without both licenses. So that's usually how the timing works.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to know.
You're welcome.
Top down. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay. So we'll bring it back to the commission. Do we have a motion?
I motion to extend this to next month's meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Sharp makes the motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Commissioner McHugh seconds. Motion to continue it to, what date is it? August 12th.
August 12th.
August 12th. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Flying through this agenda, move to item number four. An appeal of the director's decision to not issue a new license under the urgency ordinance 1355 at a commercial cannabis cultivation license number 65 at 1960 Browns Creek Road.
Are we, I'm sorry, are we on our agenda item four?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that item has been resolved and pulled from the agenda. Does not need to be continued.
Pulled from the agenda? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number five. An appeal of the director, the planning director's decision to deny a transfer of an application and assurance issuance of the new license under the urgency ordinance 1355 for commercial cannabis cultivation license number 672 at 961 Nelson, Hayford.
Okay, this is, yes, this is an appeal of the director's decision. And this, this comes into play with the urgency ordinance 1355. The urgency ordinance is a unique situation, and it is in place either until we, we county, the board supervisors adopts a transition plan, which we'll be providing you with more information in a later item, or the urgency ordinance expires early September. So there are a few people, and there have been issues that you've been presented before that have been caught in very difficult situations where their license wasn't processed or there was unfortunate situation, it was held up. The urgency ordinance went in place on December 9th, 2020, and is very, is very strict in that ordinance is in your packet. And it's a temporary situation as we transition from the EIR, which was approved December 21st, 2020, into a new program. And based on several factors, including our lack of staffing, which we're working on, that we needed almost, if I may, a timeout to, from licensing to get the transition plan done, focus on that, and focus on the licenses that were in good standing and that could be offered extensions. The urgency ordinance does not allow the issuance of licenses, new licenses. We cannot accept new license applications. Transfers to new sites are considered new licenses under the urgency ordinance. And, and there's, there's a few other things, but those, those are probably the most pertinent at this point for this discussion. The urgency ordinance, any ordinance is law. It's not policy. It's, it's an adopted law by the board supervisors. The urgency ordinance also does not allow me a lot of flexibility to make decisions. And that is, that was known because we are really trying to focus into this transition and, and so there's not a lot of flexibility for me to make decisions. This is a perfect case, and you had one before you, before with the Jessica Smith appeal. And you did grant that appeal. I have appealed that decision to the board supervisors. It'll be heard on the 20th of July. Because I'm seeking direction, because that appears to conflict with the urgency ordinance. We will find out. I'm seeking more of a direction, not because I want to be a mean and terrible person with Ms. Smith, but that sets a precedence for other licenses to be issued. So before I can issue those, because I do not have flexibility under the urgency ordinance to make director's decisions, I lean direction because if we grant that one license, it leads to others. So based on that occurrence, I did, you know, this is an unfortunate situation in this case. And it is a transfer situation. And it is a transfer to a new site. And unfortunately, that's considered a new license and cannot be issued. So that, that's the meteors of it. There's a lot of history. It's, there's some licenses that one could argue should have, should have been issued, should have been processed, but they will not. But are transfers. But right now, we're under the urgency ordinance, and that is the issue at hand. So you wrote your testimony. The, the appellant has a lot of support from neighbors and friends who would like to see them get their license. And I understand that. It's a very difficult, there's been an investment, they've moved forward. It's, it's not a great situation. However, the ordinance is a ordinance, is a law approved by the board supervisors. So that is the dilemma here. You have the staff report in front of you. It's very brief. It's a memo. You have the appeal. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have if you'd like more information if I didn't cover something, but, but that is, that cuts right down to the issue at hand for you.
Thank you. Is the appellant present?
Good evening. Anna Wright with Florida. The appellant and their family are right here with me tonight. And I will be speaking on behalf of them. I assume I have the same time as usual. Hope not to take the whole time, but.
10 minutes?
The 10 minutes, yeah. Don't see me. Just some gap fillers and emails. There was a lot in the staff report, but there are a few missed. So there should be 10 copies there, a dub for policy. Director Hunter is not wrong in the fact that this is an unfortunate situation that this license is caught up in. Bringing it really to the facts of the case, as I love to do, going into the appeal that was filed, I just want to kind of walk you through the timeline of compliance in regards to applications submitted and paid for, site visits, et cetera. So back in, this license was previously licensed. And in 2019, I wasn't the consultant handling it, so I can't explain why, but in 2019, the license was revoked for certain reasons. It was reapplied for in 2020. So February 13th, 2020, the license to get back into the program, they tendered their application fee, they reapplied. In August of 2020, it was deemed that the license fee was ready to be paid. When a license fee is asked to be paid, that means the license is approved per our ordinance. So in August 2020, a license fee was paid, I mean, over $3,500. In June, back it up before August, sorry, a site visit happened in June, so the county did their appropriate steps, they did a site visit, and then they issued, asked for the license fee in August. In October, the appellants in front of you here today submitted a transfer of ownership, not a transfer of a license onto a new property, which Director Hunter is correct, you can't do under the urgency ordinance, but in October, a transfer of ownership was submitted, again, fee tendered and accepted. So we have an application submitted officially with a fee, a license fee tendered. Again, a license fee is not tendered unless a license is ready to issue per our ordinance. And then a transfer fee tendered. Transfer fee cannot be tendered unless a license has been issued. Somewhere along these lines, the print button was not hit, and a piece of paper didn't come out. And so that's really what we're talking about right now. Just because somebody didn't print a physical license doesn't negate the history that's shown here in this timeline of compliance, of going through the transfer process of ownership, paying their fee, and then waiting. So fast forward back to this year. There was no word on this transfer due to the 2020 madness, as we know. This all happened before the urgency ordinance was passed in December. There was no prohibition officially on the books until that urgency ordinance in December to not process new applications. So for a new application that was submitted in February, a license fee tendered and a transfer fee tendered, all before the urgency ordinance, tells me that there should be a license issued. Tells me that literally print just wasn't hit, the way I'm seeing it, based on these facts. State license has been applied for, issued, they have it in their hands, they would love to cultivate with it. We were just talking about state licenses, I realize now, Commissioner Sharp, you can get a little authorization without that county license. I know people that have gotten through and timed it with their county license submission and their state app submission to try to match it. Not every time does the state catch that. They'll go through and they will go ahead and issue a provisional license. The fact of the matter is, you still have to have both in hand to cultivate. So that being said, fast forward to this spring, these appellants have another property right next door. We were working on their extension letter at the time, and we resolved the issue, we got the extension letter issued, and then it was moving on to this one. Okay, great, now we have our extension letter for our original farm. What happened to this transfer that we submitted last year? And that's when they received the email from Mr. Marvel that you see in the, in the staff report here stating that a license was never issued, so the transfer wasn't valid. When good faith compliance is being met by a cultivator, and when I say good faith compliance, I'm talking strictly about the license and the application fees and the transfer fees at this point. An application was submitted, a fee was paid, just yet nothing was printed. All done before the urgency ordinance. So I understand the laws that are on the books right now, but what I don't understand is, is how this licensee could have gotten caught up in this, and now an ordinance that was passed after all of their transactions with the county somehow takes away their ability to have a license. Everything was done before that formal urgency ordinance was put in. So we're here today because the planning commission and the board supervisors, as the governmental bodies in this county, you have the power to give staff direction to make changes and appeals in this situation. The law is never black and white. We've been talking about this all year. And I do thank Director Hunter for working as much as she can on many of these denied extensions to get them solved and not being brought in front of you. This is just one of those that we have to bring because we do need direction from you on the facts of this case. And like I said, the facts are this license has been compliant. In fact, just this week, the county went back out on Tuesday to do yet another compliance site visit. And in my mind, if you're asking to do a compliance site visit at a site that has no license, that doesn't make much sense to me, right? So this is yet another point that the license should be, should have been issued in August 25th, 2020, when that fee was paid. The transfer, then, the different name should have been issued in October of 2020 when that fee was paid. It's an unfortunate circumstance, but it's a circumstance that can be corrected tonight. And that's what we're asking the commission to do. Everything else in regards to compliance, water board, fish and wildlife, state license, that's all good to go. Their SEQA was all well on its way, ready to be reviewed as soon as it gets turned in. And this family really wants to get back into their family business, get this far going for, at this point, maybe one run, if possible, to salvage some of the fees that they paid in 2020 and renewing their license over this year. They want to keep their state license alive. They don't want to jump back into that process. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I believe I hit everything that I want to hit, and I will let some time, some of my time, if you want to take it, to the applicants to speak. Or you're welcome to speak during public comment. Do you guys have any questions for me before I step away?
Is the applicant cultivated presently at this set?
You said they're compliant in every other section?
Yes. The site inspection, yeah, the notes came back from Mark Daniel Marvel on Tuesday saying everything was good to go.
What was the reason for the first revocation in 19?
I'm not sure. I wasn't the consultant handling it at the time, and it wasn't these appellants, it was a different owner. It was, it happened before they reapplied and then transferred the license. So I couldn't explain that, and I personally don't think it's prevalent to their case since they're now the license holders and have kept in compliance since their transfer.
I guess, I seem to be a little confused, maybe. Is what they're, what they were denied a transfer?
Yes, it was a transfer, well, it was, it was a, it's a new license. Nothing's been formally denied. We were, we were given an email from a site inspector when we thought everything was going smoothly, and we asked, where's, you know, where's our extension letter for this year? And that's when the site inspector came back and said, oh, you've never had a license. Your transfer is invalid. But there was no formal notice of denial or anything like that. It was that email. And we used that email to this appeal as, I guess, a denial de facto, to be able to get in front of the commission and speak about the facts.
So who currently holds the license? Or does anybody?
There is no license.
So the last?
And I did misspeak on the transfer to a new site. I apologize. We have a lot of these going through right now, but, but Ms. Wright was correct. It's, it's just a transfer ownership, not a new site.
So the last time the license was held inactive was by the other person that is listed on here. Is that correct?
Yes. The last time a license was printed was by the last person.
Understood. Okay, so the people here today have never, technically, according to the staff, held the license?
For this property, no. They've never had a piece of paper, no. But they paid all of their fees and did everything else they need to do.
Which can happen, there can be a pre-licensed inspection completed, but that is typical.
So is that why the county sent out an inspector to inspect this property?
Yeah, they're, they're paid their fees and they're, they're still in the program, so an inspection was completed.
So I guess the question is, what was the point of the inspection if there's no license that exists?
They're in the program? They're, they're on hold with the urgency ordinance? So to speak?
If they don't have a license, they can't be under. It doesn't make sense. If, if you.
Their application is still pending at this point.
Yeah, I get that.
So could you, could you provide clarity on why the initial application wasn't accepted?
The application was accepted.
Okay, why the license was not issued? Or the?
I don't know in the specific case. I, I know what was happening at that time. I know they were coming under a lot of scrutiny under SEQA review at that time. And there was a lot of talk about, wait a minute, before any licenses are issued, we need to take a closer look at full, full environmental review and SEQA being completed on these. Has it been done? Are we still issuing permissionals? That all came under a lot of scrutiny from administration and the board supervisors. And we're, you know, we have a settlement agreement with in place as well. So that is when there was definitely more, more going on from July, August, September, going into the fall, there was the, yeah, that was also influencing licenses being issued.
So for clarity, during that window, there was a higher level of scrutiny for farms than at other times during the process or this ordinance?
Along with, you know, really backed up processing with staffing issues and, yeah.
And so from your best judgment, it was, it was not the fault of the applicants that this did not process through? It was a staffing and understaffing and trepidation to accept more licenses when, with such levels of scrutiny at the time?
I would say that's correct. I don't think that the applicants did what they're asked to do. And that's where it comes back to being a very unfortunate situation, definitely. I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, does, does the property, in order to issue the license, have to pass SEQA?
You don't pass SEQA. You have a SEQA determination.
Right. Any other?
At that time, in, in the history of the program, we have not required a site-by-site SEQA determinations.
What is it now, currently?
Right now, everything's on hold, and that's why. One of the reasons why is because now we have an EIR adopted, and we are transitioning into that program with, with SEQA completed for each site.
So when we do get back online and issue licenses, SEQA will be required prior to issuing the license?
Yes.
And this property has never had that, correct?
I'm sure components have been done. I have the file here, I can check. I'm sure bio, cultural's been done, SEQA's in process. I think the point of it really is, all of this was, this happened before the urgency ordinance even came down. Right? So all of these fees were tendered, the transfer fee was tendered, a license just wasn't handed to them. So to use the urgency ordinance to supersede this license doesn't make sense when it actually proceeded it.
Well, I think what's important here is the fact that we do have an urgency ordinance, and a lot of it does have to do with not having SEQA in place. And if the property is in the process and not completed with that, then it's going to miss the bar on what we're shooting for now. And the whole point of the urgency ordinance was to get rid of this kind of thing where properties were halfway through the process but not done. You see what I'm saying, Mr. Sharp?
I, I kind of do, but I, I would like to retort that in regards to the urgency ordinance's purpose is to give equity to all of the people that were in the program before. And part of the urgency ordinance says at the very bottom that SEQA is not necessary in this urgency ordinance. The, the point of the urgency ordinance was so that staff could gather their surroundings, gather their staffing, come up with a way to even process SEQA documents. In the meantime, it gives all of us time to prepare, which this site has done. So everyone who's holding a current urgency ordinance extension letter, which is the only thing being. thing being issued and really what we're asking for for this case, they're all still in process with CEQA too. So I bet you out of non-CUPs and non-one acres, just standard 10,000 square foot licenses, maybe a handful have done their own CEQA documents in the years prior. I can tell you right now, Flora represents 40% of the program and all of ours are in process, ready to start getting shot out next month, September. But that's all still compliant with all the ordinances. We're still compliant with the urgency ordinance by not having CEQA finalized. We're compliant with the urgency ordinance by being in process with CEQA, having the pieces done. My point with the urgency ordinance shouldn't overrule the past compliance because that was all done before the urgency ordinance came out. And this license will be well under way to meeting the same timelines that every other license holder and extension letter will meet once the transition plan comes out.
Can you have a copy of the urgency ordinance?
Let me see what I can do. I was going to bring some copies. There's just a page of it in, in the staff report.
Attachment three?
Yeah, it's just a new page. Not a full copy.
Should we give an opportunity for the appellant to, to speak?
I have a question. Is it normal for the checks to be cashed without a license being issued, for a fee to be tendered?
Well, with new licenses, so the, the fee for a 10,000 type two grow is 6,000. So in this case, 2,500 was paid when they submitted the application. And then 3,500 along with the 1,500 transfer fee would have been required when they submitted the transfer, which was kind of between submitting, it sounds like, and, I don't know, the receipts in front of me, I may.
It's in my appeal, the receipts are, it's in the staff report.
Excellent. So, yeah, there's the, the, there is the beginning fee and the end fee. In this case, the 3,500 was paid at the end and that check was cashed.
And is that normal to be cashed if they're out of compliance or a license not being issued?
No, that is not normal.
So, so Kim, why are you denying it? Because it didn't? Well, I can slide it forward. You know, I get that, but if you took money, if you took money from them at the counter, which says that you're good to go, you've got everything in, we're taking your money, we've cashed your check, then is there any issue besides the urgency ordinance why they wouldn't hand us license?
And that's why this hour was before you this evening, Commissioner Sharp?
Well, it seems to me if the planning department took their money, then you said that they were good to go. Otherwise, you wouldn't have took their money, correct?
The staff did take the check, yes. And they, they, they did not receive a license. They didn't receive a signed license. That's the issue at hand, and that's something we're working on with our process.
So it was a mistake by?
It was a staff mistake. It should not have been taken.
The money shouldn't have been taken, or it should have been issued? One of the two?
Both.
The Kennedy vote?
If the money was taken, the license shouldn't have been issued. It wasn't. Okay? And, and why that happened, I don't know. Okay? This, I don't handle, I'm not taking money at the counter, I'm, I'm not, I'm working on improving our staffing and our program. Okay? There was messy things that happened, and we're trying to work on those. So if you feel that this appeal should be granted, then go ahead and grant it. I am fine with that. I am working.
Well, Kim, you know, this kind of comes down to your, your people doing their jobs.
Commissioner Sharp, I am happy to meet with you after the meeting and not do this in public com, in public forum.
You don't give us much choice.
Hey, pardon me, I think we could bring this to an end, and I would like to give an opportunity for the appellant to, to speak. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jennifer Hill. I am the wife of Damon Liefel and co-owner of our family farms. As I already said before, we have the farm next door, and this piece of property next door came up for sale, and we were very excited to expand our operations. We've been in this licensing program since the very beginning with our farm next door. We've seen the ups and downs, we understand human error. The licensing system is not perfect. We've been through that. But we've done our very best in doing everything asked of us in order to obtain this license. We followed the steps asked of us, including paying our license fee, which the county accepted. After completing everything on our end, the county dropped the ball and didn't follow through with the issuance of the license. Our hands are tied, our fields are empty. We've been put in such a difficult position, and all we want to do is get the license that we should already have. This will allow us to cultivate the land and do what we love. We have employees that depend on us, and without an active license, we're forced to sit here until the county issues the license at a completely undetermined timeline at this point, that the license we should already have. We've tried numerous times to communicate with the county, and our pleas have fallen on deaf ears. We're raising a family, and we need to farm our land to provide for ourselves and our employees. The immediate issuance of this license will allow us to begin working right away. If it doesn't happen today, we're losing faith that this issue will be resolved in a timely manner. We work by the season, and we're scared another one is going to pass us by. This has been an ongoing issue since last June. If this continues dragging out for no good reason, we'll be putting our entire livelihood and future here in jeopardy. I urge you to consider what we've all said today and grant the appeal, direct the staff to issue this license so we can begin working as soon as possible. Thank you very much, commissioners, for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Chair, Madam Gush, if I could just, for a moment, I think I can clarify some of the questions for Commissioner Sharp in regard to the cash handling processes. I think this will make a lot more sense. So when somebody comes in with a payment and it is taken in and initialized into our computer system, we are required by county process to deposit that check. So where the error comes in is the money was taken in probably without looking at how, what the status of the license was. And then the next issue is once the check was taken in, it could be that the application was not then reviewed as well to make sure that the license could be issued. And if the answer was no, it can't be issued, then the applicant should have been given the opportunity to get a refund on that check. Now, those things didn't happen. And we're, we understand that this is definitely a flaw in the process, and we will correct it. But I think that kind of explains how we can take money in and then not issue the license, is those steps, that's what happened. So hopefully that clarifies it a little bit.
Thank you, Ms. Pleasure.
I think we have another question for?
Well, before we put questions out, why don't we put a motion on the table so that we?
Have we continued, have we finished public comment?
No, wait, I'm sorry.
We've gone off course on public comment.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we're at the point, sorry for, I'm all thumbs, so staff, then to the appellant, before more questions, we should open the public comment? Yes, let's open this to public comment.
Hi, Cameron Martin here. I've known Damon and Jen for a long time, and I was talking to Damon back in February, and he was just talking to me, he's like, I really need someone to help me do everything right, stay in compliance, follow all the rules, all the regulations are constantly changing. And I said, you know, I got a great job in Reading, but I'm on hold because of the pandemic, and I'll come out a little bit, see what I can do. And I'm going out there a few days a week, you know, going over stuff, learning all the rules, all the regulations, different, like even than they just were, we're learning together. After a couple of months, we lived around, and we're like, this is a, this is a full-time job. So they created a position at the company for me. That's how dedicated they are to being compliant and following the rules and the laws and the regulations. This is, we've done extra training in different areas, we've done extra OSHA training, different metric training, to try and really, really make sure that we've got everything by the book, all the i's dotted, all the t's crossed. So that is their commitment to compliance and being up to date with everything in this program. So I would love to feel like the county's meeting our effort, and I haven't felt like that. And if you could grant the appeal and instruct them to issue the license, that would be amazing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jake, this is Chris Hayford. A lot of fresh faces up here that have been, you haven't been around since the beginning. You know, Olivia and I just had the county drop charges after three years for cultivating with, with a license, without a license. They dismissed it, and part of that case was a piece of evidence that is an email from Richard Coons and a separate email from Leslie Hubbard at the end of her tenure here that said, because of staff's inability to process licenses and renewals, if you have paid, I believe this was 1718, if you have paid your 1718 and you have a receipt, that is your license, you are in good stead because the staff is not able to do it. Ironically, we're looking at an appeal here again with a business that if they were tasked with running the planning department, we would not be having these issues. It is another one of Trinity County's finest businesses that is smoothly run and is done properly, facing a office that literally cannot tie their own shoes anymore. Kim always but said, vote this away, let's be done with this one to the next one, give them their license and let's move on. For some reason, she feels it's her job to put us all through this ridiculously painful process. I know everybody here would rather be on like scratching poison oak, sorry. I would rather be working, but the sentiment has always been, get people licensed, get it through, and the fallback and, and the, the choke point has been playing. And there have been these different mechanisms that keep changing to keep people in the program. The emergency ordinance right now was literally to let staff get caught up on their workload. It wasn't to, to, to help the farmers with CEQA, it wasn't to, it was literally to help staff get caught up. That's why you guys have seen appeals where guys couldn't come in to pay for their license renewal because the office has been closed so often because of staffing and COVID. In fact, you just had an appeal for Tom Blanco, and when I asked him, hey, what's the status of getting your building, that's the whole hoopla was about. He said, when I called Great Western Buildings, they said they still are waiting on Jim Santiaga. So you have to sit through an appeal, which then Kim rolled over on and said, it's staff's recommendation, we just give him his license, we'll work for it. When literally what he had to do for the appeal was still waiting on Jim Santiaga. I believe yesterday, the building permit got approved. So I think we should think about that. We have a farm that's being inspected, has been inspected, so if you've paid and you're getting compliance checks, I guess I'm not sure what else the license entails besides paying and getting compliance checks and state licensing. I'm obviously frustrated. I'm more confused than before I came here, and I knew a bunch about this. I hope you guys can see that this is a reoccurring issue, and we can help get this on track and get some more of the nonsense out of the way and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Deidre Brower. I am familiar with this property and the history of its licensing. A few years ago, when the license was revoked from the original licensee, it was done so without, without an opportunity to cure their, the issue that they had. So one of the reasons I think this should be issued is because it wasn't the program. It was in, it was properly licensed when the NOP was published and was therefore considered part of baseline. They've received two inspections, I guess, so far, one last year and one this year. And it's a complete application that was submitted. The transfer fee was accepted by the county in addition to just the regular license fee. So I hope it kind of, kind of helped us a lot. I think, I think if that original license was not revoked or would have been given that seven days to cure, it would have still been in the program, they would have still been able to purchase that property. And, and it wouldn't have been a new application, it would have just been the transfer, which would have been fine. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair. Congratulations on your new position. Commissioners Lisa Wright from Lewiston. Maybe we've gotten off course a little bit, but I just want to bring it back, you know, to some of the facts. And the facts of the matter are that an application was accepted prior to the urgency ordinance. The urgency ordinance says no new apps. That's off the table then, right? It was submitted prior to the urgency ordinance. It was approved by staff. You don't receive an invoice for the other 3,500 unless the license is approved. That's per the ordinance, that's per general practice. So regardless of if the check was cashed or not, you don't get that notice, hey, come pay your 3,500, your license is ready, unless staff has approved the license. The license was approved, the check was cashed. The next thing then logically to do for a new owner would be go, to go through a transfer. Now that licensed the print button again, due to whatever issues staff was having, I understand they have a lot of issues, but it wasn't printed. This is really what this comes down to. And that's all prior to the urgency ordinance. So now to try to go back and say somehow you can't issue a license that should have been issued and was valid in 2020, and now you've had numerous inspections, it doesn't make sense to me, the rationale to even be denying this renewal extension. The license should have been issued. It was an error on the part of staff. I'm sorry that they have their issues, whatever, but the check was cashed, the license fee was paid, the transfer fee was paid and accepted. Staff doesn't accept a transfer unless there's a license associated with it. They accepted it, it was processed, we've had inspections. Why are we trying to push people who are just trying to make a living, they're in the program? You have less than half of the licenses issued, and we're trying to push people out that have been good participants and following all the rules and been in compliance? I don't get kind of what's going on. It's not an excuse, I don't feel, you know, to not have staff. This should have been dealt with last year. Similar to last commission meeting, I know just probably two of you, I think, were here then, but it was approved, same thing, staff wasn't able to do their job. That shouldn't fall back on the applicant in any way, shape, or form. It's not their fault. They should qualify under the urgency ordinance because a valid license was issued, wasn't given to them in form of paper, but they paid for their fees. So just to reiterate, there should have been a valid license in their hands, they didn't have the piece of paper, but they paid everything, they've been in compliance, they've had numerous site inspections. Please approve this appeal, issue the license, let them get on with their lives. This is a small family-owned business, don't push another person, another family out of the program. We need to get more in the program, there's thousands of illegal grows. Let's, 10 to 4,000 probably, and 250 in the program, and that all drives tax revenue as well. Now push another one out because of staff issues? Please. Please direct staff to issue this renewal extension. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. Joan Brower from Junction City, and I agree with, everything has been said. This is, this is one more of these kind of messy, sticky ones. The program is trying to force an awful lot of change in a very short period of time in a little county electricity. This is just one more of the growing pains, and the urgency ordinance really was kind of an emergency Band-Aid or maybe a tourniquet at that moment would have passed to try to give staff a moment to hit the pause button and address many, many, far more complex issues than we're here to look at tonight. But this is one of several where Director Hunter is, I think, doing the right thing by waving the flag and saying, let's kick this one to the planning commission. Because we do have this urgency ordinance, it is, it was a good tourniquet at that moment, it's not quite perfect, especially in their instance. But you guys have the opportunity to give your blessing to Director Hunter to hit the print button. It seems that that was once, really, just a small oversight in what was a very chaotic time. Print button didn't get pushed, like it did on several others too. So I encourage you to approve this appeal and give staff the direction they need to hit the print button. It's really, that's the, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment here?
Can I make a quick one? Sorry.
It's all you?
Olivia from Hayford. I just wanted to reiterate that.
I just wanted to reiterate that everything that's been said here really reflects the same issues that keep coming up in these appeals every week. We have a lot of people who are getting caught in backlog and in no communication from planning that are getting on this list to be appealed. And to put all of these in front of planning is just a major waste of time. I mean, a lot of these could be dealt with in a simple conversation, and I feel like these applicants aren't given that opportunity before they come before you. And I totally support them as a family and a farm, and I'd love to see this granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments here in the chambers? Any public comment on Zoom?
Veronica, go ahead.
Good evening, this is Veronica Kelly Alves from Douglas City. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity to speak. Something that I heard earlier from one of the consultants is that there are a lot of CEQUAs in process, and this might be one of them. My understanding from the ordinance, not the urgency ordinance, is that CEQA must be completed in order to have a license, not be in process. So that is a question that I would have, is was it completed in order to give a license? So in other words, would it have negated giving, having, hitting that print button as they say? Because my understanding is that CEQA is required not to be in process. And just to put the shoe on the other foot, it sounds like the consultants and the growers are doing their best as well to catch up and get all of their ducks in a row, and they're working hard, and I know that the planning commission is working very hard to make everybody happy as well as to do their job, and it's a very difficult job, so I give kudos to what they're trying to do in a very difficult situation. But some of it comes down to, was CEQA done or not? That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Belongo?
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm out here in the hinterlands. Okay, thank you. Good evening, new Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Tom Belongo of the city. And you've heard a lot about what this is and what these applicants are, and I wanted to point out a few things about what they're not. They're not illegal growers, they're not inconsiderate of their neighbors. We saw all the notes and letters in there from their neighborhood, these are the kinds of people that are, we want in this system, and they're going to make Trinity County commercial cannabis successful. And I think, you know, had somebody pressed print in the planning department, we wouldn't be here, they'd have that license. There's nothing more they could have done other than harangue Director Hunter on a daily or weekly basis, and I'm not suggesting anybody should do that. We understand, last year was a challenging year, there's no question about that. It was challenging for planning, it was challenging for applicants and licensees. So these guys are ready to go. They've got a state license, they're in metric. If they get the opportunity to cultivate this year, they're going to do it in the footprint they've already established, they're going to do it according to the terms of their state and county license, and they're going to pay taxes on what they grow. So I urge you to grant this appeal. And, you know, I read the urgency ordinance as allowing this kind of thing to happen. I think it's important for you to weigh in on this, I know there's some question of how the urgency ordinance should be interpreted, but I think in this applicant, we should let this license go through. Thank you. And my wife, Tase, actually wants to make a comment.
The name of the members of the board, thank you for your time. I just wanted to say that I am a birth worker in this area, I'm about to be a licensed midwife serving Trinity County, and this family has settled in Trinity County for a reason. They want to see it flourish and grow, they're for proper community planning. They have sunk hundreds of thousands of dollars into this county. So to have members of the board not grant this appeal and potentially push them out of this county to a different county would be a dire mistake. They want to see Trinity County flourishing with young families, they want to raise their children here, and they want to see a successful program. They convinced many people to join this program when a lot of people had a lot of doubts. So I just urge you to really consider the kind of people that you're dealing with. Jen Hill volunteers with the Firebells, Damon Lee Bolt donates to a lot of local charities, and, excuse me, I have to cough. And both of these people want to see this program successful. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Any more public comment on Zoom?
Adrian Keyes.
Go ahead, Adrian. Adrian, are you there?
Adrian, can you unmute yourself?
He said my mic isn't working.
He's having difficulty.
Can you hear me? Thank you, I apologize for that.
We can hear you.
All right, I'll keep it very brief. I also agree that this permit should be issued, it's pretty clear, and, you know, any one of us could find ourselves in this situation at any point, that this operation's done everything they can to get through the program. And just for the planning commissioners, I do want you to understand, you know, how the provisional licensing program works at the state level. Just yesterday, in the Trinity Journal, a letter to the editor was printed from you, and I did my very best to explain in just as few words as possible how the provisional program functions at the state level. And so the fact that CEQA has not been completed is not a qualifying factor to deny, for a local jurisdiction, to deny a land use permit to an applicant. That's a summation, I please implore you to read the letter that I wrote, and to please, if you have any further questions, you can feel free to reach out to me. I know you all can find my email, this is just, we need to stop having that conversation. The provisional program is real, as I stated in my letter, 39 out of 39 laboratories in the state of California are provisionally licensed. The state of California's program depends entirely on laboratories to allow product to be delivered to a retail outlet. If the provisional program did not exist, as I described, there would be no cannabis industry at this point. The provisional licensing program will sunset, and at that point, everyone will be required to be provisional, but there is absolutely nothing in statute that prevents a local jurisdiction from author, from providing authorization, I apologize, to the state to issue a provisional license. And I think that's just an extremely important and timely piece to get out here. And I'll reiterate, this appeal should be granted, and the spine family should get their license and be able to begin operating. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Do we have the other side of the jury?
Okay, there's no other public comment? We'll bring it back to the commission. We have a motion?
I have questions.
Why don't we put a motion on the table first, and then we can have a discussion. Any questions?
Do you have a motion before we give a couple of questions?
Questions for staff?
Yeah. Couple things regarding the report. Okay. Can you tell me what 1960 Little Browns Creek has to do with this?
It has nothing to do with it, that was a, that was a error in the agenda, and you did receive an updated, corrected agenda.
Got you, thank you. And then the only other question is the CEQA question, does the ordinance read that CEQA has to be complete before issuing the license?
I do not know any specific section that states that, now CEQA is the state law. The CEQA determination does need to be made, and in this case, it was either provisional, licenses were provisional, as Mr. Keyes just spoke to, or they were found to be exempt from CEQA. So in that case, a notice of exemption was filed under one of the exemptions, either what we call categorical exemptions, usually that would be an existing facility for existing sites that were already built, it's already there, and you know, we have a baseline, the baseline is a certain point in time, it was there at that time, you are not going to impact the environment. And those were issued categorical exemptions, there's also some other categorical exemption categories that are used, but that's the most common one. So you had either one or the other, you had a provisional or a CE. Now, as we got further onto the program, and we are in a settlement agreement with TAA, one of the items in that settlement agreement is that we would stop issuing provisional licenses. That is what happened last July and August, is there was, we were still issuing them, the choice had been made by previous staff to continue issuing provisionals, and that carried through under my watch.
So just to clarify what you're saying, as of July, with the TAA agreement, you can no longer issue provisionals without CEQA?
And that was in place.
I don't think that's correct, the settlement agreement doesn't state that. I think you need to show a agreement.
Hey, just bring it back. Can you provide clarity, Ms. Hunter?
I don't have the TA settlement agreement in front of me, I don't have access to the internet. That, whether it is in this settlement agreement, I believe it is, I don't have it in front of me. However, the issuance of provisional licenses came under scrutiny, whether it was in the settlement or not, and I would try to find a copy, I just don't have that right now. So that came under scrutiny, can a county do that, or is just covers the state? Okay? I have my beliefs that a county can, but legal counsel, we've been in many conferences with legal counsel, state legal counsel, on how this does. Now, other counties do issue provisional licenses, they do, but suddenly in Trinity, it became a big question of can a county issue provisional license, or are those provisions in state law just applicable to the state? That has been disputed, it has not been decided yet. So at that time, I'm not making these decisions, these are things, you know, I am being directed to do, and I was directed to stop issuing provisional licenses.
Thank you.
Okay? It may not have happened in public, but I was directed to stop issuing provisional licenses, it was a very difficult position.
Was that based on CEQA?
That is, that is under the context of CEQA, yes. Because if a provisional license is saying this is provisional until CEQA can be completed.
Correct.
So my question would be, this site has a, has had a license that was covered under the baseline of the urgency ordinance. The license was taken away, and now there is a new license applied for the same location. Has that location been changed or altered, or is it the same footprint as the original baseline?
I believe there have been some improvements made, grading and some improvements, but they did have an inspection a week ago, I was just looking at that report. There was a cut, actually David Kolbeck was out there, he could speak to that, about 8,000 square feet, or sorry, a cultivation area of 8,000 square feet. All structures are permitted, there's some proposed structures.
Mr. Chair, in the front room, Mayne Cameron. Excuse me, Director. The appeal we're being asked to review has to do with the timing of the issuance of this vis-à-vis the urgency ordinance. The urgency ordinance has nothing to do with the CEQA stuff. The urgency ordinance, as was pointed out earlier, was an interim, stopgap to give the staff time to catch up as was character. The appeal has to do with, should this license application be granted the extension for the urgency ordinance or not? Now, the staff can certainly revisit the subject of this license being compliant, CEQA or not, as a separate issue. We're not being asked to make a determination on if this application is complete and compliant with CEQA. We're being asked to make a determination on whether the urgency ordinance interpretation that's been applied is accurate and should stop the processing of this application, the transfer. I think that's the matter before us.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think that would lead to a good time for us to put a motion on the table. Any commissioners like to put a motion on the table?
Okay, so I'll give it a shot. I'm going to motion that we deny this based on staff's information. Yeah?
Do we have a second for this motion to deny? Okay, motion fails. Do we have another motion to put forth on the table?
I'll take a shot at one.
I'll move that we uphold the appeal. Based on the apparent record showing that this license application was in process, was valid at the time of the urgency ordinance being issued, and therefore, under the term of the urgency ordinance, this process should continue under the extension provisions. And that is our interpretation of the urgency ordinance in this case.
Okay. Do we have a second?
So just to clarify, you say uphold the urgency, are you saying to grant their license or to hold them in limbo?
I'm saying to uphold the appeal.
And grant the extension, Senator?
Grant the license.
Yes. I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second on the table, so let's discuss this.
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Mike, about what we're here to do, but I've got to believe that if there was a settlement in court in July about CEQA and having those CEQA approvals prior to issuing provisionals, that that had to come up in a determination, and maybe it came up and that's why they were never printed, I don't know. But there's obviously been multiple issues with staff, with the whole program and how it's ran, which is what leads us to all these appeals. But to approve a license that doesn't have CEQA, when that was a directive by the court, sets precedence. Whether that was before or after the urgency ordinance is mute, in my opinion, because this license was obviously in the program before that, it should have been required to meet CEQA, that should have been done. I would think--
According to order, there's only, I think, five farms that have CEQA entering cannabis fields.
Hey, excuse me, hey, please, please, this is discussion amongst the commissioners.
That's not my order.
He's new and has no idea--
That was not a point of order, please, sir.
So I mean, that's what I'm kind of saying, is that if you approve this, it doesn't have CEQA, there's precedent that you can approve any provisional license without CEQA, that there was a mistake.
With all due respect, that precedent was set three years ago. And I don't think, I think that's a much bigger issue as to whether all the existing licenses are valid and should have been issued or not in the first place. I think, alluding back to the comments-- I think, alluding back to the comments on Director Hunter made earlier about precedent setting with these appeals, I think if we were to wade into the issue and we're going to stop the Department from issuing licenses based on CEQA at this juncture until that's been clarified, would be a real Pandora's box. So my recommendation is we don't wade into that one. If the county issues this license incorrectly based on the fault approached to how CEQA was handled here, that's a different issue. And that raises a question of all the other licenses that have been issued under that same model.
Well, I don't agree, because the settlement wasn't made until July of last year.
But we're not the people who enforce the settlement. It's a settlement agreement. It's not a court order to us to do something. That was an agreement between the county and somebody else, somebody who's-- And we're not the cops on that one.
Thank you. Lori, do you have any input on this?
I'm following along with Commissioner McHugh. I agree with everything he said to try and re-engineer the wheel or close Pandora's Box. It's a little late for that now. Commissioner Sharp mentioning a finding in July. I'm looking at a letter dated here, May 17th, and a bunch of other letters. I don't think it's the petitioner's fault in any way, shape, or form that the staffing issues have got them caught in a very precarious position. And I don't think they should be punished because of it.
Yeah, it seems that they fell within the timeline of the urgency ordinance on every factor, including payment, except for it being issued. And it was clarified that the issuance was of no fault of the applicant's. They did everything on their side that they could. And at that point, it was the staff that slowed down and stopped them from being put into that category with the people before a particular date. So--
No, I agree with that.
Well, in this case, let's go ahead and vote on this. So Commissioner McHugh, could you please restate your motion cognitively?
Can I get this synopsis?
Yeah, sure.
The motion is to uphold the appeal.
Okay. All in favor of upholding the appeal, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
I think this one's a roll call.
Is it a roll call? Do you want a roll call?
I would recommend that.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous.
Moving on to item number six. Item number six, the planning commission will consider the recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt ordinance amending Trinity County Code Title 17, Section 17 dot 43 dot 050, to revise the wording to clarify the intent that commercial cannabis sites are not allowed within 350 feet of residential dwellings without an approved variance. Planner Lozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, Lisa Lozier, Deputy Director of Planning. And this particular project basically is a technical clarification of code. We had a discussion on May, at the May Planning Commission meeting, which unfortunately, Commissioner Barrett did not have the privilege of being included in. And also, we brought a resolution to the Planning Commission at our last meeting in June, asking the Planning Commission to direct staff to initiate a change in language. And basically, what this is all about is in Section 1743, which incorporates the directives for the cultivation of cannabis. Part of that discusses what the limitation on location to cultivate is. And that's specifically 17.43.050. And that section allows for a variance for distance between a cultivation and a residence is basically what that gets at. And the reason that we had kind of a technical difficulty with this section was for one particular word, which is the word adjoining. And the intent of the variance is to allow people, or, you know, if someone wants to cultivate in an area that could be potentially within 350 feet of residence on surrounding parcels, then they would apply for a variance and that variance would be published. Notification would be sent to surrounding property owners. So if there was a conflict or a question or some confusion, that could be sorted out. And, you know, agreement, not agreement, it would come to the Planning Commission and the initial variance would be approved through the Planning Commission. So the issue we had with the word adjoining is it doesn't necessarily, when it is taken as very specifically what the word adjoining would be, which is directly parcels, directly adjacent to the cultivation site, doesn't necessarily, and I'm looking for a really good way to explain this in a short manner. If there is a parcel, for example, a fee titled road between the property cultivating and potentially another property with a residence, then the word adjoining would stop at that fee titled road and wouldn't necessarily include the residence on the property that's just on the other side. So in an effort to make sure that we're including all of the people that may potentially be impacted within that 350 feet, we had a discussion about what that word adjoining actually meant. And what we got to was it wasn't necessarily consistent with the intent, which was to allow all residences within 350 feet of where the cultivation area is, an opportunity to speak in favor or not in favor. So the resolution that we brought to the last Planning Commission meeting was a procedural resolution for the Commission to instruct staff to make some changes to that text. So it is more inclusive and is more in line with the intent of informing property owners with a residence that is potentially within 300 feet of a cultivation. So during that meeting in June, we received some direction from the Commission with language that would be a little more specific as to what that would mean. And what we came up with is to strike the word adjoining and include the phrase, and I added a little bit to this mic, the phrase was additionally, originally to be legal parcels. And my recommendation is to add to that as defined in Section 17.43.010, specifically so we're consistent with the meaning of what legal parcels are in regard to cannabis cultivation. Because that, legal parcels, has a number of different meanings in different types of planning issues. When you're talking about what the actual parcel is a legal parcel in regard to the Subdivision Map Act, which is not what we're getting at with this. So what staff is recommending is that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors to revise the language of Section 17.43.050A8 to read as follows. And that would be, for specialty cottage, specialty and small licenses, cultivation shall not be allowed within 350 feet of a residential structure on any other legal parcels as defined in Section 17.43.010. For medium licenses, cultivation shall not be allowed within 500 feet of adjacent property line. Applications for variance from this provision will be considered by the Trinity County Planning Commission. After obtaining an initial variance, the Planning Director can issue a director's use permit for subsequent years after an inspection. And I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for clarifying the language. Here's--
Oh, thank you. And also, from the previous meeting, you had asked if we could take this directly to the Board. And the reason I'm bringing it back to the Planning Commission is because the May and June meetings were not public hearings. And we're required by our zoning ordinance to have at least one public hearing by the Planning Commission before forwarding to the Board. So that's why we're back.
Quick question in the second verbiage there for medium license. It says 500 feet of an adjacent property. Is that adjacent, we're going to become an issue now, or--
Adjacent property.
300.
500 feet of an adjacent property.
Right.
At least you got the property line setback, which is the proper setback.
Yeah, and, yeah, Mike's right. So generally, a variance setback is from a property line. And for a type three license, it is to the property line, which is your typical. For the specialty, the specialty cottage, and the type two, it's to the nearest residence, which makes things very complicated.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Deidre Brower. I would just like to request that the word legal residence be added to that, so it's not one of the illegal. I know that's been the practice, but I think also the practice was to recognize 350 feet in general and not necessarily just if it was adjacent. So maybe to prevent any confusion in the future, just make sure it's a permitted dwelling. Thank you.
Staff would definitely concur with that. We ran across that issue several times.
I agree. The John Brower, the original urgency ordinance and impermanent ordinance, they used the word permitted residential structure to help prevent somebody from throwing up a lean-to or putting a sleeping bag on pallet and saying, no, it's not a residence. I think it does make sense to have some kind of language like that, retain the original But yeah, simple fix. And I think in keeping with the intent of the original office.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Zoom? Okay, bring this back to the Commission. All right, we have a motion.
I would agree with that last comment. And I think the word was permitted, not legal. A legal residence is--
Permitted.
It was permitted. undefined term, I would guess.
Yeah, I don't think we have a definition.
I would guess permitted is okay. I'll make a motion for discussion purposes. I would move, if you're ready.
Yes.
I would move we adopt Resolution PC 2021-10 as presented with the following change. We will add item five under the now therefore. It says we recommend that the verbiage be further changed to insert the word permitted before the phrase residential structure in the same paragraph. And find that the amendment to Chapter 1743-08 of Trinity County Code is not subject to CEQA under the general rule of exemption 15061B3, which exempts activities where it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility of causing a significant effect on the environment. And B, the Board Supervisors approve an ordinance to amend the zoning code of the county attorney identified in Zone Amendment Dev. 2102. What is Dev. 2102? You mean PC?
Well, we do a county initiated project. They have the development D E V prefix rather than the P. It's very confusing.
It is very confusing. The resolution we put forward is the same 2021. It's PC 21, 2021-10. So I'm going to recommend that this, that my motion says it's the Zone Amendment attached and in the packet as PC 2021-10. That's the one. I'm taking the motion of that. Is that okay? What'd you call when you said 21, I guess?
I'll second that. Okay. Commissioner McHugh makes the motion. Commissioner Sharp seconds for discussion. It makes sense?
I have another question. Don't get me wrong, but that Zone Amendment Dev. 2102 is something other than the resolution. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's the project for the amendment.
Okay.
Which includes basically the ordinance resolutions previous to. So we would be basically alluding to--
I understand. So I would follow that. Paragraph B in my findings is as presented. The Board Supervisors approve ordinance to amend the zoning code of the county attorney identified in the Dev. 2102.
I'll second that. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor of the--
Roll call.
Ah.
Roll call.
Commissioner Sharp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Barrett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous.
All right, moving on to item number seven is a discussion item, a staff presentation on commercial cannabis transition plan.
Excuse me, as I get the volume correct. Congratulations, Commissioner Barrett, and to your new post as chairman. My name is David Kolbeck and the Environmental Compliance, Senior Environmental Compliance Specialist for the Department of Transportation. So what I'm doing here basically is to walk through a presentation, a PowerPoint, but also some follow-up material related to the transition plan coming from the EIR. So a question of the Commissioners, would you prefer I stand at the podium or is this okay? Is this volume okay?
It works for me. Yeah.
So in a couple parts. First is by way of introduction. The intent here is really to give the Commission as much background as we can. So the PowerPoint was something that was originally presented to the Board of Supervisors, I believe, on April 6 of this year. This is following the adoption of the EIR in December of last year. And I'll get into the details there, of course. But again, the intent here is that the Commissioners will have a chance to ask any questions that they wish, especially after the follow-up information, which is built around a monthly report that Director Hunter and I have been giving to the Board in the first meeting of every month subsequent to that first April meeting. So with that, PowerPoint, please. So again, this is a brief overview, something that we have been working on over the past several months, or I should say that has been conceived of for the past 18 months as we're in the middle of the EIR, excuse me, middle of the EIR-- we were in the middle of the EIR, excuse me, middle of the EIR process. We knew that we needed to have this transition period in order to implement the changes that the EIR requires us to do. So for the implementation of an EIR, there's any number of mitigations that will be called out. And basically, all those mitigations were then rolled into the new ordinance that was adopted in December of last year and came into effect at the end of January of this year. That new ordinance has with it as a required component of environmental. To back up, I realize I'm not giving an overview of the CEQA process itself, California environmental law. So if there's any specific questions that the commissioners may have, we've given, Director Hunter and I have given with our previous consultant, some educational, basically meetings and presentations regarding the overall structure of CEQA law. So if there's any questions along those lines, I'm happy to answer those, too. Back to my point.
That could really make it a really long night with the CEQA questions. If we could keep them brief and we will make sure to schedule a CEQA, a basic CEQA training course for you. So if you have questions, that's fine, but CEQA is kind of a labyrinth of layers and mazes of information. So yeah, it just, let's just keep that in mind tonight.
The sooner the course, the better.
Yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion, Director Hunter. You're right, it can't get long. But this slide here in front of you is the mitigation monitoring and recording plan is something that's required of environmental law. Basically, that's telling, that's saying who's going to do what, who's going to actually implement these mitigations. And in this case, for this EIR, it's the county that is responsible to do it. And that is where the transition plan comes into being. It's a way for us to actually implement these mitigations. The way that we see doing that is basically putting together this framework of a plan, having that adopted by the resolution by the board of supervisors. That is the direction that we are going. Next slide, please. So the overall structure of what we're doing is, yes, the framework of the plan itself. That's the document that I'm attempting to put together with, that is an internal review, internal vetting at the moment within the planning department in the cannabis division. The other component is the workload management. How are we actually going to be able to staff up and get these things done? As we know, current staffing levels are increasing and on an upward trend, which is very encouraging. But we have also some other methods to increase our ability to implement this framework. The third component, which I contend is just as important as the others, is outreach. And that is essentially education to the public, to consultants, to cannabis applicants, to growers themselves, and to our staff itself is just, you know, what is this plan? What does it actually mean? In the past, we've used frequently asked questions, and I feel that that was not sufficient. So the vision is something much broader than that in terms of everything from YouTube videos to tutorials to brown bag launches to whatever is required in order to get people the FaceTime and the multimedia approach that they would be able to understand what this framework, what is being asked of them by the program in order to move through these various steps to become compliant with this new ordinance. All of that gets us to the top of the slide there. The main goal is a compliance determination. That is for each individual licensee to have a determination that they are compliant with all the appropriate mitigations that our environmental document calls out. We are the ones doing the environmental document. They are providing us material. We determine that they are in compliance and we move forward. Next slide, please. So for each of those steps, I am going to break it down just a little bit more. And so for the framework itself, the big component of that, it was an appendix to the final EIR. And we're calling it Appendix C in short, but it really is an environmental checklist that is, again, built off of guidelines of CEQA, a standard within the state. So we have that checklist. It has already been published and adopted by the board of supervisors and passed through this commission. That is the real framework, where each individual licensee must go through that environmental checklist and assure that they are adopting all the mitigations that are appropriate to their site. Part of that becomes a second bullet of specialist reports or other documentation, which is, again, a standard in the environmental industry. Specialist reports range from botanical to biological to archaeological, cultural. It's all across the gamut of all the environmental factors that have to be analyzed. Any one of those may require a specialist report that is coming from a qualified individual. Regardless, it will create quite a bit of documentation. It may create a bit of documentation that an applicant will need to produce for us depending on their site. Another thing that the framework does is it really is the mitigation selection. Again, there's 64 mitigations, I believe, 63. It's here in front of me. I won't dig it open, but you know, each individual site will not have to address all of those mitigations. It's only those that are pertinent to their site. And so the framework here is really, okay, how do you figure that out? Walk through the process of the environmental checklist to make sure that you're hitting the right ones and not leaving anything out. Some of these mitigations are structured in a way that they need to happen over time, such as, say, for aesthetics, the idea that you need to screen your cultivation site. And that's only in certain circumstances that you need to do that, but it's not even... And the preferred method is through native vegetation, some sort of vegetation screening under certain farms, certain circumstances. So that kind of plan takes time to develop and needs to happen through 10 years or more. The point here with that signal last bullet is that you have to have a plan. You can't defer that mitigation into the future. It's not permitted under California law. So we need to know what you're going to do in order to satisfy that mitigation. Lastly there, this is intended as a framework to be an iterative process, that we're going to have to revisit these steps over and over again, with some degree of adaptive management within the program itself. This is a complicated structure, and as we implement it, which we're intending to do soon, as soon as we can, we understand that we're going to have to go back through and refine it. And we may, I don't think through resolution, but we're going to have to revisit this and keep it a living document to assure that we will be capturing the problems and also celebrating the successes of individuals in the program and as staff, as they're able to refine it in the future. Next slide, please. So this, again, simple little graphic, the idea of an individual starting on the bottom left there, going through an environmental checklist, roughly 100 pages in template form, but that is not what is necessarily required of individual licensees. That highlights which mitigation someone needs to implement. You then also have as a component really of that, the idea of the documentation that supports what their determination is. Like, I'm arguing that I need this mitigation and not that one. Well, tell us how and why. And then moving on to the, you know, upper right, sort of the assess, plan, and implement. You know, those mitigations, as I mentioned, they come, they run the gamut of what's required. So how are you going to assess? How are you going to plan in the future? And how are you going to actually implement it? Tell us what you're going to do so that we can check up on your progress. And once we know what you're doing, you will get a compliance determination. Doesn't mean all the mitigations are implemented right off the bat, but you get a compliance determination that allows you to move forward. We're working with the state in different, several state agencies in order for that, to dovetail with states' expectations and legal expectations of CEQA implementation. All of this is based off of case law and CEQA guidelines and statutes. Next step, please. Next slide, please. So I already briefly went through that. I will only highlight at the bottom of it, the idea of verification. And again, that is really where annual inspections or even possibly more frequent really need to, you know, that's on the county. For the program to continue to function, to implement these mitigations, we will need to verify the veracity of the information that's being provided to us, not only at the initial compliance determination, but also in the future. Next slide, please. So this I put together, again, back in April. I wanted to highlight here just, because obviously my thinking was to break down the individual components of the mitigations and highlight that there's only a few mitigations that really require assessment, at least in title and name, reconnaissance surveys for biological, for example. So I'm highlighting out of the 63, 64, apologies, which mitigations are sort of following underneath those sort of rubrics, those sort of, that title of assessment. Next slide, please. So planning, that gets to be a little bit more mitigations. People will need to be able to plan, including some of the, say, controversial mitigations or environmental impacts, I should say, in terms of odor. Odor became overriding consideration. It was unavoidable, basically, the impact of odor. So we still have a mitigation that's related to it, but the idea of implementing a plan, if that's necessary, how are you going to do it? An example of waste, that's something that we should be able to standardize what a plan looks like, that we want to see and have that applied as universally as possible. Next slide, please. The implement, there is where you have 22 mitigations, where it becomes quite a bit more heavy in terms of what you need to actually do on the ground. And yes, that does include some surveys and avoidance measures in terms of actually moving your site in one direction or another to avoid a particular impact, in this case that I have highlighted, there are special status plans. That is also a state requirement. You know, you can't impact a state listed species, so try to avoid it. And that is a physical implementation sort of component of a mitigation. Maintaining the cultivation parcel, that is keeping it clean, that's something that needs to be implemented and can be implemented immediately. In comparison to a plan that may take time, these are those that should happen immediately for each individual location, once we have this plan, this transition plan adopted. Next slide, please. Yes, so here I'm just trying to highlight some of the discussions that occurred, included in front of this commission, when the final EIR was brought to you for certification with some new people here. I left it in here as something of potential interest. Of course, all of those debates and discussions that happened back at that point, I believe it was in November of last year, I'm happy to revisit those as necessary, whether this is the time to do it or not. You know, questions I've heard in recent commission meetings regarding implementations of mitigations for water. So I would highlight groundwater there, mitigation measure 3.12 dash two, sorry, 3.10 dash two. That may be of something of note for you to consider in terms of keeping up the speed with how this transition plan becomes operable. Next slide, please. Requirements for compliance determination. This is where I was trying to get to the point where if you have a plan, you need to have benchmarks. You need to be able to actually show us that you're making progress on your plan in the future. So you need to give us something that says, in five years, I will have done all of this. But I'm doing this in the first year, this in the second year, and that becomes an actual plan. So we need to see the benchmarks because, again, I consider that a legal responsibility on our part. There's also some potential for unique circumstances on any particular, say, some location, some farm, some applicants. They may have some unique circumstances that were not covered under the EIR. We will need to have a conversation with them, is one way to put it. But if you have unusual circumstances that we just didn't envision when we wrote the document, then there needs to be some additional mitigations that come into place, that come over the top of the EIR that are unique to your site. Some of those could be cumulative impact driven, some of those could be density driven. Cumulative impacts is more of a key word for CEQA law. So that will be in the discussion in the future and is being discussed in the transition plan. Yes?
Who makes the determination that unique circumstances exist?
That is something that, and to be honest, as we're developing this plan, that's a very good question. We're developing this plan at the point we're in what we would call an administrative draft, which is really meant for internal review. And that's something that we did, of course, any CEQA process, any mitigated negative declaration or EIR will go through an administrative draft, an internal review, internal vetting. That is where we are right now. So while it's a very good question, and I noted it, I will defer in answering too much at the moment. So that one could be table that for the moment, please, because I have some ideas, but they're not fully vetted, I suppose.
Nice to know those.
Your last slide, I wanted to hear your pieces of that was roads. Good.
Could you go back to the last slide, please?
So under roads, the MN 3.14 dash 3 provides site access for hazardous duty unit roadway. In that piece, are you guys, and this is a question that has actually been brought to me by a few people in our community, that for marijuana sites that are in rural residential areas, and this has been brought up several times recently, that we have, you know, basically a bunch of micro communities in the mountains. So in different areas, you'll have, you know, densities of 10 homes. And they all have a common road going into those 10 homes. Usually those roads are dirt one way, and then all of a sudden you have this micro community. When all that was approved, I'm assuming that the fire department, cattle fire, and somebody probably looked at that and said, this road is adequate for 10 residents to use and get out safely in a fire situation. What's been brought to me recently is that what if a fire happens? I have three grow sites around me. They have 15 workers there. All of us try to evacuate on a road that wasn't designed to handle commercial traffic. Is that being considered in this piece for fire safety and exit?
Very good question, and again, a complicated question, and one that if I were to speak too boldly about it, or I would be stepping out of my lane, I think, to be honest. It is a very good question and one that has been phrased in different ways at the time that the EIR was certified. And the reason that this roads and that specific mitigation is up there, because it was one that was discussed a number of different times. So the idea of the framework is to be able to help explain that, how this mitigation we wish to implement it. However, the framework can't describe all of the details. That becomes something where the supporting material needs to be presented.
Let's see.
Well, essentially, so, okay, there's many ways that say, you have a road access issue, and that could be the Fire Safety Council, that could be county code 12.10, that's a problem. It could be noncompliant with Fish and Water, I should say, the Water Board standards and the State General Order based off of the Rural Roads Handbook, which is also a requirement on their part. So there's a number of ways that roads can become a complication, but if it's in the community, yes, very much so. I would point you to the wildfire section of the EIR as well, which I believe is one of the last environmental factors. So I won't speak too much more, I suppose, about that particular scenario that you just described, but I will say that the intent of the framework is to provide a launching point for those discussions, where individual applicants can begin filling out the right paperwork as we want to solve those problems. If something arises and we need to change some of the framework, or some of our paperwork, or something to make it easier, that also gets back to the iterative or adaptive management question that I mentioned earlier. I can't answer that question now, but I'm hoping that this becomes the launching pad where we can answer that question.
Okay.
Next slide, please. There we go. So this is the other category. I mentioned framework, workload management, and then outreach. So this now is the workload management section and staffing considerations. I won't, you know, go into that. You are well aware through updates with Director Hunter about the new hires and the new potential for hires and the budget allocations and everything that's going in the right direction, in my opinion. We also need more support than that, though. And that would be the middle bullet there of consultants. I'm sure that Director Hunter has mentioned in RFQ that is currently posted, that we're looking for some outside help in order to help us manage this paperwork that we will be seeing. So that is in the works, that is moving forward. There may be other components of help that we can discuss in the future, I suppose, but understand that between the actual internal allocations, the position allocations in the division, as well as those consultants, we're looking to gear up for this framework process. There is a potential, this is a somewhat outdated idea of memorandums of understanding or agreements between other organizations that may be able to help us with some specialized skills. Also, there's a project specialist title, I suppose, how do I say that? Temporary work within the county, you're able to hire a project specialist for a certain task for a limited amount of time or hours. Those are all ideas in terms of how do we manage the workload that we see. Those are all ideas in terms of how do we manage the workload that we see. Next slide, please. So this was some simple math that I did in order to give people an understanding of the workload requirements that our ordinance is really, we're in a position of facing now. We needed this environmental document, we got the document, and so now this is what it's looking like. Environmental checklist, something like 100 pages. All the assessments that may go with that, 30 pages, depending. Plans, those may get big. So those could get 50 pages. Implementation reports may be simple. But all of that sort of equates to the idea of 200, 300 pages per applicant, of information that, in many cases, they've already produced. They've already gotten those reports for different reasons, whether it be Fish and Wildlife, the Water Board, less than three acre conversion. There's a number of different ways that they may have been required to produce some of this documentation. But regardless, we're asking for it. And that's kind of how our EIR approach was. Okay, it might be written, but we want to see it. Because we are also in charge of this program. Well, that gets to quite a lot of pages that we all need to digest. And this is very rough math. I'm happy if I'm wrong. But this is just something to understand, that this needs to be implemented over time just because of the volume we need to digest, as well as the ability of any applicant to put this material together. Happy to answer questions on that one. Next slide, please.
What do you mean by time?
Time, so that again is understanding that, say, the urgency ordinance is set to expire in early September. We are now in early July. And this framework that I mentioned, I'm expecting to be adopted by resolution, is meant to supersede that urgency ordinance. It's meant to take the place of the urgency ordinance and can be written in a way that that happens. But in order for that to happen, it needs to take, we need to understand that as soon as the transition plan is in place, then people are in a position to be providing us this material, getting their annual, getting their compliance determinations, getting their annual licenses, meeting state deadlines for licensure. All of that needs to be done in a fairly stepwise and progressive manner. And the details of that are something I can touch on later, perhaps. Maybe not so much details, but understand where that idea fits into this overall framework. So perhaps I can table that for a moment. If you make a note and remind me, please. So continuing on this, I don't know if I need to dive into this much. You know, I'm trying to look at all the mitigations that were in the EIR and sort of present them in a way where we understand in a more realistic sense that this is...
Hands everywhere. Oh, no, look at my cup, I'm so sorry.
I've only got about six right here.
I have one myself.
I think I might have swallowed some. Oh, I did!
Debbie, are you okay?
I'm fine.
Okay, okay. I won't belabor this. It's trying to show some internal process of trying to paint a picture that's more realistic about mitigations. When, you know, this is coming relatively fresh off of certification of the EIR, where it was hard to digest the idea that we're just putting more regulations on everyone. I was actually trying to paint a picture of, it's not all 60-plus mitigations that apply. It's a subset that will apply based off of what you wish to do on your site. So Debbie, if I could ask you for the next slide, please. That's a good distraction there, it's a useful one. So then, lastly, third component is outreach. Again, I mentioned frequently asked questions, which we've done before. Very well-intentioned, became difficult to digest, did not hit the people it needed to, did not get to the people it needed to get to. So we would like to make sure that we're throwing a variety of options out there to the public, and to ourselves, honestly, so that we can really digest this material as well. But recognizing that even though the workload might be a lot, even though the framework might be heavy, we need all these materials in order to actually make this process function. Because without this component, I stress that I don't believe it will function as it should. Again, this needs to be iterative, iterative. It needs to be changed over time, because as the framework changes, as problems arise, then the outreach needs to change with it. And we have some ideas in order, in how to make this happen. We've talked for some time about, of course, videos or things like that, but there has been some discussions or ideas thrown out about who and how we could get this component done. So this has not been left, by the wayside, but we are working in tandem with all three of these components. Next slide, please. Between those three components, getting to a compliance determination, and then, well, that's the point. Once you get to the compliance determination, you are compliant with SEQA. As long as you're following your plans, implementing the mitigations, you never have to do this again. So it's a one-deal shot. We're trying to get through, you know, getting to that compliance determination. But once you have it, then it's back to the annual licensing process. Any future ordinance amendments, cannabis ordinance amendments that might come into play, that may tweak it slightly. But the notion here is that the heavy lifting of the EIR was done by the county, the program. So now individual licensees need to plug into it, abide by environmental law, and just plug into the overarching framework or overarching environmental document that we've put together. Next slide, please. So I believe this is the last slide. Maybe one more, it's just a tail slide. So I'm happy to discuss any of these if you wish. I understand perhaps it'll get a bit long. I do have some more material to go through. But, you know, the notion of how does this relate to the urgency ordinance, I described that a moment ago. The intent is that, once this is adopted, the urgency ordinance goes away. Have to be realistic, that there's a chance the urgency ordinance will need to be extended. But we're hoping to meet a timeline that would mean that this would supersede that urgency ordinance. So then, had to highlight again, as I've been, I've been at this for almost three years now, I suppose, but commercial cannabis ordinance amendments. The notion there is that there likely will need to be a supplemental EIR that is done if there's any additional large amendments made to the cannabis ordinance. And that is to meet environmental law requirements. You can't get away from that. The point I want to make here is that because we have a final EIR, the program has been analyzed, you can then tear off of that, that's what it's called. You can then use that main document and then create what is hopefully, or essentially, a smaller supplemental document. And that supplemental document would only analyze the factors you need to analyze for any of those amendments that may be proposed in time. That process, of course, would come to this commission, depending on how long it takes. But expecting the future, some amendments to the ordinance, as well as a supplemental EIR. So, or some form of that additional EIR, additional environmental review. Enforcement of illegal operations, that always has to be a component of any framework that we have, I believe. I don't feel that this framework needs to speak to that right now in greater depth. I understand that many might wish that it would in terms of their original ordinance language. But I don't think that this is the place for it. My point is that to get people to be as compliant as soon as possible and have the focus on illegal operations, rather than legal operations. Get people to the point that if you're legal, you're in the program, you're environmentally compliant, then effort can be spent going after those operations that are not in the program. Of course, that changes until the point where the license cap increases. That's in the future. But that's how I would phrase that now.
I have a question in regards to that.
Sure.
In regards to enforcement currently, and I'm just not knowing a lot of this stuff, so... In regards to enforcement currently, does the planning department provide currently, or in the future, the Sheriff's Department, a list of legal operators? Or are they just not known?
I will answer that. I handle more of the logistics than David does in the department. So we are in contact with code enforcement, and they have access to our permitting system, which is SmartGov. And they will check to see if a site is in the program. Usually, they'll check in SmartGov. If they have a question, they will follow up with us. If there seems to be maybe a unlicensed site or something that's expired, they will check with us before moving forward with any enforcement. And again, just because we have some new folks here, under planning, we have code compliance specialists. Code compliance specialists are to help our licensees, those in the program, be compliant. Code enforcement, also funded by cannabis, is under the Sheriff's Department. And that is to, and code enforcement's focus is on those sites that are not legal or are out of compliance. And so we do work together, but we focus on the legal.
So code enforcement is in planning, though, correct?
No, code enforcement is under the sheriff. Code compliance is in planning. Comply, bring you into compliance versus enforce. That's under the sheriff.
And is there a certain person in the Sheriff's Department that works directly with planning?
We work with the code enforcement officers. There's only two and a half, so...
Thank you for answering.
There's Officer Barcelona and Ron. It's been a long day. And then Will Oliver is the half. But he also works up at the lake for enforcement.
Thanks, I appreciate you just mentioning that one.
So to continue briefly, and again, this dovetails with what I'd like to be talking about next. I just highlighted the idea of ministerial versus discretionary actions. There's a number of ministerial actions that exist within the planning department. And those include building permits, less than three acre conversions, which the county legally has to authorize and then set that permits, the well permits. There's a number of them. A lot of those relate to cannabis operations. So while we need to issue ministerial personnel, in ministerial permits, we need to do that. That's, they're ministerial, they're exempt from SEQA. We also recognize the discretionary component of that action, which if it's related to cannabis, then it becomes discretionary. So in environmental law, discretionary actions, even if it's mixed, discretionary trumps in whether SEQA applies or not. And that's what I wanted to briefly highlight here. And so next slide. I believe that's the last one, please. There we go. So with that, I'm happy to just step into this next component, if you wish, to try to walk through that, or...
Can I make a motion to take a short recess before we go to that next section? Is this not a motion to recess?
Uh, no, we're taking a break.
Or it's too great, yeah. Okay, let's take a five-minute break, please.
Yes.
Yeah, I sip some.
Tomorrow, we've received one proposal so far. We have to receive quite a few more tomorrow.
Who's that proposal from?
I don't know. Yeah, I wouldn't say that at a meeting generally, yeah. I looked at it, I was happy, I stamped and received it, and I put it in a pile to...
The Yeho.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so staffing shortages. The program has been historically understaffed. So when the program was adopted, there was no increase in staff. It was the same amount of staff that has implemented the program from when it was adopted in-house. So suddenly, the staff that was there was tasked with enormous project. And over the years, that wasn't really, didn't really improve. I came on two years ago. In fact, today's my two-year anniversary exactly to the day. Yeah, it's been quite a ride. And my first six months, it was hands-off cannabis. We had Leslie Hubbard, Deputy Director handling cannabis. She'd been in the program for a long time. I remember watching a Planning Commission meeting, actually, the week before it started on YouTube, and Leslie was saying, "We are understaffed, we're trying." And at the time, I was like, "Well, is that really the right thing to say to a Planning Commission?" And now I can say it, I totally understand where she was at that time, much more empathy. But nonetheless, it's been continually understaffed. It's a very administratively heavy, heavy program. And so when I arrived in 2019, we had admin staff, and we had Leslie. And David, David had David helping us for many years, thankfully. And they were looking at, David's always worked on the CEQA portion of that, also just support in other areas. Leslie was over the program and working to implement that. There was an ad hoc committee at the time, made up of two supervisors as well overseeing the program. So my first, first six months, it was, "I'm just here to be the director." Leslie has cannabis. There was no planner at the time, no experienced planner on staff, so I couldn't took up the planning, the non-cannabis planning items, plus trying to run the department and being department head. And so that's how it went for the first six months. In February of 2020, Leslie resigned and moved on to another job. And we also had, historically, prior to me and during my tenure with Trinity County, a lot of turnover in the cannabis program. It's confusing, it's messy, it's not black and white, it's really hard on our staff. And so it's been constant turnover, and it's continued until recently. And we have a really good staff now. It's still missing a lot of folks, there's vacant positions, but we have a good dynamic and a good morale. So building from that, the board has very much supported us adding allocations to the department and making it priority to get more staff. It's hard to hire people right now. And it's very hard with the area we need, along with the reorganization, because we had co-compliance and admin doing their things. And then we have Leslie and then myself. And then Margie DeRose was there for a while as a senior planner from September to March of this year. And we didn't have that middle, the planners, the more, a little bit more experienced to handle the file review, the CEQA to conduct that, we didn't have that in-house. And so that was missing. We were very, very heavy on the bottom side, you know, the bottom level with admin and compliance doing their roles. But we were asking admin staff to do things that was, you know, more experienced. I mean, they're just, we had to fix that. And so it's been a reorganization process. What do we need? Do we need that many admin? They were kind of stepping over each other. No, we need to fill in these middle positions, I'm going to say. And that's an environmental compliance specialist, that's David's position. We just got an allocation in planning and have allocations in cannabis for that. Planners in cannabis. And that program manager position we had to create. So we're making progress, it's just filling those positions and finding the right people. So we're doing good. We hired Melissa. She's recovered from her experience, I think. And she's done a wonderful job organizing the files and upfront. We will hire, so Melissa's an admin clerk. We do need to hire an admin coordinator. We're interviewing for cannabis planners tomorrow. Very excited, we have five candidates we're interviewing, which is pretty good these days. We have interviewed twice for cannabis program manager. Made an offer, unfortunately, that person would have been a really good fit, but they were offered another position with better benefits, better salary, and working from home. So, you know, that's an obvious. So we're still looking for those positions. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. There's one more change that has occurred recently too. And that is Bella Hedke, our Associate Planner under Planning, has moved over to the cannabis side. And she is now a compliance specialist working in cannabis. And so now we also are lacking a planner in planning, but we're flying for that and hope to interview soon.
So, quick question. What is your current staff level for cannabis and how many open positions do you have?
I will have to get back to you on that exactly. I could do an estimate, but we've gotten so many new allocations. Yeah, could I, I would be happy to send that information out.
Eleven people?
I think that sounds, yeah. Eleven, eleven allocation. I think we're up to fourteen, actually. I think we might be up to fourteen. We were, we were there, but...
In that ballpark.
Yeah, eleven to fourteen allocations. And we have two and a half in compliance, no, actually, just two in compliance now. We kind of borrow somebody from building every now and then. Two in compliance, one admin, myself. That's it. And we're, yeah.
If I could jump in, just to clarify, that I work for the Department of Transportation, but much of my time goes to cannabis development, such as the EIR, things like that. So I am a burden on the program, I'll put it that way.
Such a burden. Such a burden, such a hell.
So who does your job at the road department?
Nobody. Prior to Director Hunter's work to actually get other environmental compliance positions allocated in the planning department, I have been the only one in the county. So, and that was written specifically for the Department of Transportation. So now, through some work with the Board of Supervisors, there's now more, greater potential for some environmental work in the county itself. To date though, aside from, of course, Kristi Anderson in environmental health, my position is a bit different. Right, who does my work? No, I'm nobody, actually, at the moment.
As a void. So the environmental compliance specialist, as soon as we change, we've drafted changes to the project, sorry, the job description. So once that's approved by the union and the Board of Supervisors, we will fly for those positions. And I believe we have three allocations for environmental compliance specialist. But gosh, if we can get one, we're going to be happy. But we'll try. So, yeah, it's working on it. But what I'm excited about is we have a really good team and a good dynamic, which hasn't always been the case. So, really appreciating that.
It would be nice to also talk about how many people we have building, land, and environmental health in the cannabis division.
So one thing that I would like to point out is, you know, you've heard a lot of complaints about how septic wells aren't being investigated, and building permits aren't being issued timely, and, you know, on and on and on and on. And I think it's really important for everyone to understand that between environmental health, planning, building, and the cannabis division, we have fourteen people. Fourteen people covers everything.
So the fourteen that you just said were not in cannabis, that's your entire staff?
That's correct. Now, there's additional allocations that we're trying to fill, but what we're doing is trying to carry the load of all of this for the entire county with fourteen people.
Well, that's obvious.
So, you know, it's definitely not an ideal situation. The other thing that we may need to pay very close attention to, and this is obvious based on a lot of the discussion, particularly this evening about appeals and, you know, how this or that or this didn't happen. There is a lot of confusion, or has been in the past, about what each person's role was, you know, in what happens. Okay, somebody comes into the counter and they want to pay for something. So they make a payment, and then what happens? What happens to that paperwork? You know, who's notified? Who needs to know? Who needs to review that application? What does that person reviewing, what are they reviewing for? What do they do after they complete their review? There seems to be a lot of confusion about what those steps in the process are. And that's really important thing that we're trying to iron out is, if somebody comes in the door, who do they need to speak to? What needs to happen next? What needs to happen after that? Who needs to look at it after that? What is our end goal? And then how do we correctly review that? How does everybody have access to that information to understand at any point in time where we're at in the process? So that's ultimately where we want to be, is that there's no question about whose job it is to do what, or where something is particularly in the process. I mean, when I first started, we couldn't find files. So a lot of that's been cleared up. We know where those files are. We know what they're supposed to look like. We know what they're supposed to contain. So, you know, it's a lengthy process, but we understand where we need to be in order to actually produce the results. You know, so we're getting there. We're getting there. But it's a long and complicated process.
Sure it is. Thank you.
Okay, I think that covers the transition plan presentation. Anything to add?
Only if there's questions that wish to be asked, but no, I'm available. Otherwise, I'm happy to move on as you wish.
Is there any more questions for staff, the commission? Thank you for that thorough presentation. All right, so we can move on to item number eight, which is the selection of the vice chair for the remainder of 2021 year. Is that just a discussion amongst us, or is that just staff of information?
Yes, we do find ourselves in kind of a unique situation here. Generally, you don't really, now Duncan, you've been on a year now, haven't you?
Just about.
Just about, okay. So here you are as chair. Yeah.
I was hoping to get to the end of the year before.
I know, I know.
But you're in.
You are. So that opens up the vice chair position. So, yeah, typically, you hope for somebody with a little more experience to be chairing and vice chair of the Planning Commission. We don't have that luxury right now. We do have Mike. Mike has a lot of experience.
What's the rotation now?
I think it's kind of out of kilter now.
Well, that's why we...
It is, he went to vice chair.
He moved up one year, but then who would have been the next year?
Me.
I think, I think...
Not, not, he stepped, he jumped up, jumped you, but who would have been? Did we just swap the two?
Yes. He took over vice chair for this year, and then he would go back next year. I think I would be chair this year.
So at least that's how I understand it. He would be flipped this year to vice chair, because I was bringing him. And then next year, he would back you a little.
Yeah, he would go into chair next year, and you would go into vice chair. So that would be the rotation, I believe. I can check, we can continue this, I can check.
And so then...
But I recall Commissioner Sharp...
It's something like that. But it was my first meeting, so I was just...
Yeah.
Sounds great.
So then it would make sense if I would be, continue to be chair next year, and Commissioner Sharp would be vice chair, and he would be chair.
We will, we will, we will, at the first, the February meeting, we will make sure that, yeah, that will be on the agenda to discuss.
Okay.
It's the second meeting, the February meeting, that's in the code to discuss that. And that's likely, yeah, that will decision will be made. Either Commissioner Sharp will move up, or you will continue for the rest of that year, depending what the pleasure is of the commission.
Okay.
Okay, so I would now make Commissioner Sharp. Who would tee him, who would definitely tee up for that. What makes you...
Do we have a second for Commissioner Sharp being incoming vice chair?
I'll second this guy.
All right. So we, do we need a roll call for this? Or is this all in favor? Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Sharp becoming vice chair for the remainder of the year? I say aye. Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. There you go.
Almost there, almost there.
Right. Moving on to Planning Commission reports. Any of my fellow commissioners have any reports in the last month? Okay. In that case, we'll move on to the Planning Directors' report.
Okay, I'm going to say a few things and then hand it over to Lisa to cover the general plan. That's happy news. First of all, we have some appeals going to the board from Planning Commission decisions. One is the team application, the distribution facility that was approved for a conditional use permit. I believe that was June 2nd. That's in the Trinity Alves Business Park. That has been appealed and will be heard at the July 20th meeting. As I mentioned, I have appealed the Jessica Smith decision, and that will also be heard at the July 20th meeting.
Just for clarity, could you, was that the one in Southern Humboldt, or Southern Trinity?
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, the Pirate Farms.
That's correct, okay.
And that's a good direction from the board regarding the urgency ordinance. And is the interpretation to be gray or black and white? And does, and these set a precedence? So as does the decision tonight, there's going to be many more. Where I'm going to have questions, I'm going to say, "Now you've issued this license and appeal, we're in the same situation, we want ours as well." So that, that's what, that's the challenge I had, it is what it is. We will be looking, oh, another appeal issue, but this is in the reverse. It's coming back to you, is the Smith pit. It was, we had a very long meeting yesterday at the board, many planning issues on the agenda, planning matters. And the Smith pit was heard. The operator appealed the decision of the Planning Commission. And there were some concerns about the process of reaching the decision, and that the board decided to remand that item back to you to hear again.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. I have not set a date for that yet. I don't know if it's August, but it will be coming up.
That would be the hearing to revoke or...
Modify.
Modify the use permit.
Correct. Correct. We'll definitely be looking for training for planning commissioners. We discussed that a little bit before the meeting. Commissioner Heaton's not here, but we'll be looking for that. There's several entities that offer trading. Lake of Cities, UC Davis Extension. We'll find what works for you, let you know.
Obviously, it will work as well.
Okay, that'd be great, that'd be great. I already mentioned Bella has moved over to cannabis, so we're looking for a new planner. New building. We will be moving into our new building, it's about finished. In fact, I hope to see it tomorrow. Carpet should be laid. That is the Scotts Valley Bank Building. Planning and cannabis will be moving to that building. Environmental Health and Building will be staying at 61 Airport Road. More room, hire folks, and work in a more efficient location. Right now, we don't have a lot of space. Yeah, we're pretty packed in there right now. So that's exciting, very exciting.
Could I ask one question of clarity on that? I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not, but was that building funded purchase with the cannabis programs?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
It was. Okay, and I just, through all these appeals, I do want to remind you that we pulled three off the agenda tonight, because I am working as much as I can with folks. I mean, can always do more, I try. But we are working to resolve some of these, so we don't, they don't come before you, because I know these are very difficult, complicated situations. But we are, I try to keep as many off the agenda as I can, if we're close. So, trying hard to do that. Ants are breeding stray in the room soon, the ants. I checked with Richard when he was here, Coons, and they had a tough day in here today doing budget. So the exterminator's been called. Hopefully, there's none at the next meeting. Also, please let me know if you'd like to meet and discuss concerns, questions. You know, we can meet, discuss. I know this is a lot, you are new, the four of you. Mike's been around for a while, but, you know, how long?
Five years, I think.
Five years. You're very experienced compared to...
I had a lot of hair when I started.
Anyway, the office, you know, all of you, of course. There's a lot going on. This is a busy county. Lisa and I worked for Shasta County. I was there for two years, she was there for sixteen. I think this is a busier county volume-wise than Shasta County. And there's a lot more population over there. Granted, there's three cities, but, I mean, there is a huge workload. And so you have a lot going on, we're heading into a general plan. There's just a lot going on. You have questions, you know, what's going on? If you have questions with the staff report before the meeting, give us a call. It's very important, and I'm saying this to the new commissioners, and I think you've been doing a really great job with this, but read your staff report, because that's where you're going to have a question, and we can maybe resolve and clear up some things or clarify before the meeting, so you're going in with that understanding. Okay, that'd be great. I think that's it. And then I'll hand that over to Lisa.
I get the fun part. So our consultants are doing newsletters for us for outreach. So I wanted to give each one of you a copy of the newsletter. We actually have business cards, which is pretty cool, so we can have those out. And this is basically to help inform the community and give them an idea of what a general plan update entails. You know, what the general plan entails. I'm sorry, Karen.
Lisa, Lisa.
I am so sorry.
2050 is what the plan will be good through?
Yes.
It's not when it's going to be adopted.
Sure. So basically, we're hoping on the timeline that we currently have laid out is to get through all of the processes and get the general plan approved and adopted by 2024. So that gives us a 25-year plan. That's how we got to 2050, and 2050 just sounds cool. We also have a website, which is trinity2050.com. You can go on the website, all of the information that you're seeing in the flyers will be updated. There are sections that will give information about new upcoming events and just general information about where we are in the process. It also includes tabs for people to register. They can register their email, so they will be connected and will get updates, you know, and copies of the newsletter, all the things that are going on. If they want to contact somebody, you know, that's what that's for. It's kind of our hub of information, so we can keep everybody on the same page. We realize that the county is very large, small population, so this will provide a way for people to easily connect with staff working on the general plan update and also our consultants, so they understand. People can send us emails with questions or concerns, and then we can get back with them in a timely manner. So what you're looking at is our newsletter number one. And we expect those newsletters to come out periodically throughout the process, so we can keep people informed in a number of different ways.
Does she have all addresses in the county?
Yes. And so I wanted to touch base on kind of what we have going on. When we last spoke in June, I was pretty excited, because we had a scheduled kickoff meeting for June 24th. And unfortunately, due to some miscommunications, and I won't go into any details, because it was just kind of weird, we were not able to move forward with that meeting. So what we did is we kind of regrouped and we rescheduled everything for the week of August 10th through the 15th, which is the county fair time as well. So we're going to do, hopefully, have our kickoff meeting scheduled for the 10th. That will be here in Weaverville. And then our consultants will have a booth through all four days of the county fair, so we can do a lot of outreach at that point as well. And the community meeting in the evening also that week.
On the 10th?
On the 10th, there'll be a study session with the board. It'll be a board meeting. We do hope the Planning Commission can attend. There'll be a presentation by our consultants, Mentir and Harish, and subcontractors, so...
August 10th?
August 10th, yeah.
At 10:00 AM?
No, we're expecting an afternoon meeting, we think two, but we'll need to confirm. We're waiting to hear back from the deputy clerk of the board.
And will there be a second meeting, a follow-up meeting, that the commissioners will need to be involved in?
There'll be many.
During that week?
There will be evening meeting, you're welcome to attend. The evening meeting at the T-PAC, the Trinity Performing Arts Center.
That same evening of the 10th?
The 11th.
That will be the 11th?
Yes. We originally hoped to have the board, the study session with the board on the 11th, but that didn't work out. So we'll get back to you on the dates to confirm.
And that will also be listed on the website.
And that, those, all those dates will be emailed to us?
Yes.
They'll be emailed to you, and also, you know, if you want to log on to the website, there are tabs that list all of the upcoming events, dates, and times. So that's a real easy way to keep up. And as you talk to people in the community that are interested, please do encourage them to check the website. That'll be a really great way for them to be able to keep up and understand where we're at in the process and communicate with both staff and the consultants.
My fourth question. In this process, what is our role?
Oh, that's a good question. It will be covered in the study session, but the short version is, you're the oversight committee.
So, I'll explain that.
We will be checking in with you, you'll be overseeing our progress, rather than the Board of Supervisors, as you deal with planning issues. The general plan and the zoning code are both being updated. We'll be reporting our progress to you. There will be technical advisory groups for certain issues that we work with, just, you know, focus groups on certain topics in a technical capacity. But the oversight and development of the document will, you will be overseeing that. And that will be explained more in the study session, the roles and the process. But that's the short version.
Thank you, Kim. I even said this, I messed up, but is there a regular planning commission being involved?
There is, so there's two meetings that week.
It'll be a busy week.
Yes, well, on the fair. Oh, we have? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned. It's off.